At this time, I would like to call the Davie County Commissioner's Special Call Meeting to Order. A special call meeting of June 22nd, 2020, to order. As we will all remember with our new electronic meeting rules, we have to have a call to order to make sure we're all present and accounted for. So I will ask Mr. Vogler to conduct the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please answer up as I call your name. Mark Jones.
Here.
Benita Finney.
Here.
Terry Renninger.
Here.
James Blakely.
Here.
Richard Poindexter.
Here.
And as you vote on each item of business today, I'll call on each of you to allow you to record your individual vote again as electronic records in the meeting. I'll again take the roll call so Stacy will have a record showing that each one of the commissioners attended the full meeting, so please don't hang up until after the meeting, until after the final roll call. If you lose connection in the meeting, please text in or call John Eller on his cell and let him know immediately. Then the meeting can be resumed back online, so you're not missing anything. With that said, Mr. Chairman, the meeting is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. This time, I would ask Commissioner Jones to lead us into invocation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. Father, we thank you for your mercy, your grace, and your goodness. We thank you for placing us in this freest of all lands, Father. And, Lord, today, in this meeting, we seek wisdom, we seek discernment, we seek knowledge and understanding to carry out the business of this great county that you've placed us in. And, Father, we thank you for the leadership of our county, we thank you for the citizens of our county, and, Lord, we just pray during this very challenging time, Father, that you would give us strength, courage, and boldness to carry on, Father, and to seek your agenda for the men and women, boys and girls, of our great county. So, Lord, bless our meeting today. May we give you the praise, glory, and honor that you're due. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Okay. I would, next we get to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like for us to all say this in unison, and I would ask you to rise, if you're able, wherever you're at, as you recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. As the three powers for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. This time, pursuant to our new agenda procedures, we have an ethics and conflict disclosure, and I will ask Mr. Vogler to read that and call for the vote.
Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-86, the Davie County Government Code of Ethics that was adopted back on December 2nd, 2019. Now, for each of you, before you adopt the agenda, there is potential, potential, or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda, which we presented before the board today. For a vote? If so, please speak up and let the board know before the agenda is adopted. I would call on each one of you to answer those questions. First of all, Mark Jones.
No.
Benita Finney.
No.
Terry Renninger.
No.
James Blakely.
No.
Richard Poindexter.
No.
Mr. Chairman, the meeting is back with you.
Thank you. All right. Before we adopt the agenda, I understand there's a couple of budget amendments that we need to consider this afternoon so we can get them into the June 30th, 2020 year-end budget. And Robin West has sent us those two budget amendments, and I hope you've had a chance to look at those, but if so, if someone would like to put those forth, that would be great. Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that those two budget amendments that be added, the first amendment being for emergency services, emergency medical services for donations that have been received at EMS this week. The second amendment is for senior services for coronavirus funds, Family First Funds, awarded through the Piedmont Triad Regional Council for Congregate Meals for Davie County seniors. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to include those amendments.
Would that be included in the consent agenda?
Yes, I'm fine with that. Yes. Mm-hmm. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Second, Chairman. Mr. Blakely makes that second. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, or hearing none, rather, if we were all in favor of the accepting the two budget amendments into consent agenda for today's meeting, again, Mr. Vogler, you'll have to call the roll here.
Mark Jones?
Yes.
Benita Finney?
Yes.
Terry Renninger?
Yes.
James Blakely?
Yes.
Richard Poindexter?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Now, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Benita. You have a second.
I'll second the motion, Chairman.
Thank you, James. Okay. Have any further discussion on adopting the agenda as amended? Hearing none, call for the vote through Mr. Vogler.
Mark Jones?
Yes.
Benita Finney?
Yes.
Terry Renninger?
Yes.
James Blakely?
Yes.
Richard Poindexter?
Yes.
All right. The agenda as amended is adopted. Okay. We next move to public comments. Mr. Vogler.
And we have not gotten anyone who's signed up public comments electronically ahead of that.
All right. Thank you. Next, we move to presentations. We have several presentations this afternoon. The first is the presentation of the service revolver to Sergeant Elena Geiger and Mr. Eller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Typically, as all of you know, when we're together, the sheriff presents a weapon to be among the ranks who are retiring. Fortunately, we're not together to be able to do that, so today, as part of the presentation that you typically do in person, we're asking you on behalf of the sheriff and the sheriff's department to approve the service weapon donation and the badge award to Sergeant Elena Geiger for her committed and dedicated service to Davie County Government. We will need an action on that, Mr. Chairman, so the sheriff can then do so.
You will need a motion to have declared surplus property with no value, and then a motion to donate that.
I would like to make the motion to declare that surplus and to donate that to Sergeant Elena Geiger.
Is that surplus property with no value, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I'll second. Okay. That was marked, right? Yes, yes, sir. All right. This is one question, and I fully support this. The agenda does say fiscal impact of $1, which, does that matter?
It does. It does according to statute because there's a monetary amount that we have to put on there, but typically, Mr. Chairman, we waive that fee for, so we have to have it in there for the official donation, but we do take care of that for our own.
Okay. So the motion that's presented is signed, then?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. All right. Motion is seconded. Any further questions, comments?
I would like to make a comment.
Okay.
I would just like to say, I'm sorry that we can't present this to Elena in person because, in my opinion, she, more than any other law enforcement officer in Davie County, has made a tremendous impact upon the young people in the school system in this county all the years that she served as a DARE officer. And she has certainly been a huge, huge benefit to many, many aspects of our young people's lives, so I'm very grateful for her. I love her very much as my friend, and I'm very honored that she is able to receive this.
There is no question that her impact has been felt through the DARE program. She was very committed and very eager in that program, did a great job.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do you need a vote? So, Mr. Vogler.
Mark Jones?
Yes.
Benita Finney?
Yes.
Terry Renninger?
Yes.
James Blakely?
Yes.
Richard Poindexter?
Yes.
All right. Well deserved.
Yes, sir.
The next presentation is the Capital Improvement Plan, and I will call on John and Ms. West.
Mr. Chairman, as all of you know, commissioners, every year, we have to present our Capital Improvement Plan to all of you. Typically, our consultants will come and do that with you and present the document we have attached. That document is in your agenda today, so you've got the longer version of that. Ms. West is going to present to you a very modified version of that and hit the high notes of those, but we do have two CIPs that we have to look at with a five-year forecast. The first is from our general CIP, and the second is our utility CIP. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to Ms. West now to give you a quick update.
...........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just adding a few things to what Ms. West said. These are the same projects and numbers that we talked to you about in your 521 individual budget meeting, preparatory meetings, it's the same one we talked about on 526 regarding our special call meeting, and the same one that went out, obviously, in the recommended budget. And as you recall, from our Davenport presentations in the past, as Ms. West said, typically, when you tap into a larger project like the detention center, it's not uncommon to see that dip, and that's typical of what other governments are dealing with right now, and you've heard Mitch tell us that before. So, appreciate all the staff's work on this and for your benefit, just knowing that these are the same things that we've been sharing with you previously.
So, I'll be long into the public utilities capital improvement plan. That document is just a small three-page document. It's got the layout of the five-year, the next five years capital improvement plans, for the utilities, and this one is a source of funds. The future project is having a water system expansion study. We are in the process of applying for a state revolver fund call, which is similar to what we've done with the East State Exeter Project. And you can see on page two, which is church and the packet page number 58, the details of each of those projects, if you are wanting to get further information about it, the one at the top of the water system expansion study, they have the coming months, they have cases of the issues where they are committed on that, are wanting to present it. So, more information about what they found in the initial study. So, this will be a plan for the next 20 years in Longford, County and the town of Moxville for the water system. The rest of the projects are mainly speaking of the carbon feed system and just our regular water system expansion types of projects.
Mr. Chairman, just to add again to what Ms. West said, some of these projects, well, many of these projects, we very much appreciate what Mr. Lambert has done to help us and his team. Some of these ideas and project upgrades have come from his own team members who've had some great ideas to help us improve their safety, but also the future of our water system in the county. As Ms. West said, we are trying to set up a joint commissioner meeting between the Board of Commissioners here and then the town Board of Commissioners, as well as Moxville. That date is still trying to be firmed up, and we're hoping to do it on the same date of your next meeting. We're still trying to work out the schedules among the Moxville Commissioners before we commit to that date, and I will be in touch with all of you about that. But that is a tremendous leap forward for us and could not have happened without Mr. Lambert and his leadership as it relates to really projecting the future water needs of Davie County and the town of Moxville for years to come. It's been a great partnership with the town. We applaud this board for allowing us to enter into that. I remember the meeting we had in the commissioners' chambers here with both bodies, and what a great step forward that was. This will continue to further that. So, thanks to our utility team and our engineers and all the people in this room, but especially all of you for granting us the approval to move forward so that we have a good water source for the future.
Thank you, Ms. West and Mr. Eller. Anyone have any, we've seen this stuff before, but does anyone have any questions or comments about either the capital improvement plan or the public utilities plan? I want to thank everyone for all their hard work on this, and as far as it relates to the joint utility study with Moxville, I'm excited about that, and we'll look forward to hopefully hearing more about that on the 13th of July, if all works according to plan. So, no one has any comments or questions about the, is it the capital improvement plan or the public utilities plan? We do, that is an action item, so we will need to vote on that. So, we will, I see no reason we can't vote on them together. So, if someone would like to make the motion to approve the capital improvement plan and the public utilities plan as presented, please make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the capital improvement plan and the public utility plan as presented.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Poindexter. I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Poindexter. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, rather, I will call for the vote through Mr. Vogler.
Mark Jones?
Yeah.
Benita Finney?
Yes.
Terry Renninger?
Yes.
James Blakely?
Yes.
Richard Poindexter?
Yes.
All right. That is approved. Okay. Next, we move to the 2021 budget presentation and public hearing. So, I will turn it over to Mr. Eller.
Mr. Chairman, the public hearing will obviously last until 6:25, when you reconvene at 4 o'clock. I'll state a little bit more about that before the end of the meeting. Mr. Vogler, though, will read, as he typically does before a public hearing. So, I'll turn it over to him, and he can point back to me here.
Chair, as announced, this is a day and hour for the beginning of the public hearing. Pursuant to Chapter 153A of the North Carolina General Statutes and Chapter 10, according to Code of Ordinance, this board is conducting an electronic public hearing on the proposed 2021 fiscal year budget for Davie County. The publication of notice of the public hearing is in a newspaper within general circulation of Davie County as of June the 11th, 2020, and June 18th, 2020, is required. Clerk to the Board has attached the affidavit showing publication of paper on the date released 10 days prior to today's date. I would ask all who wish to comment on the budget for this public hearing to follow the instructions set forth in the notice. Public hearing published June 11th and June 18th, 2020, as to how to make comments on the proposed budget. As a review, you'll submit your comments with your full name and telephone number of your email address, and this is all one word, clerk to the board at daviekennyc.gov, or call 336-753-6006, and leave the comments by phone message. Comments will be received until 12 noon on Thursday, June 25th, 2020. A vote on the budget will be held on June 25th, 2020, and a special call meeting via digital or electronic means at 4:00 p.m. on that date. Again, those email addresses are all one word, clerk to the board at daviekennyc.gov, or call and leave a voice message at 336-753-6006. I'll now turn the public hearing back over to either Mr. Eller or to the board chair to provide the opportunity to move forward.
So, this, yeah, I was just going to say, is everyone clear that the public hearing is open until, you receive comments, the Thursday at noon, Thursday, June 25th at noon?
That's correct, and we're required by law to hold it open for 24 hours. We're actually holding it open for an extended time period until Thursday, 12 noon.
All right. All right. So, the public hearing is open, and I'll ask Mr. Eller to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thanks to all you for your help in getting us to this point. So, I will begin my presentation by making sure we're meeting the statutory language in the presentation every year, and then we're going to go through some slides as we talk here. I'll begin, and I'll share some slides with Ms. West, and we will do our best to keep you moving, and if you have any trouble hearing us, by all means, let us know. So, commissioners, as required by North Carolina General Statute 159-11, I present to you our recommended fiscal year 2021 budget for Davie County in the amount of $78,795,593, which maintains the property tax rate of .738 per $100 of valuation and maintains .04 county-wide fire tax. In addition, the advanced rule of fire protection tasks, district recommended rate of .02438, which remains the same, and that is in addition to the current .04 county-wide fire tax. The budget is balanced and prepared in accordance with the local government budget and Fiscal Control Act, and we will start with some slides that we'll be recording today so that anyone trying to tune in can be able to see those slides per your recommendations.
Correct.
And we'll go ahead and then begin that process. So, uh, our first slide, just a few things, uh, to note on this here, and, and these are the same slides that all of you have seen, uh, before now. Uh, we want to put these out for our public to view, uh, but the recommended amount, uh, is there. It talks about, uh, maintaining the tax rate, which was important to all five Commissioners, and we appreciate, uh, uh, your thoughts regarding that. The value of a penny of property value, uh, in this fiscal year equates to four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, and in addition to that, uh, we do know there's gonna be a, an impact from sales and use taxes, uh, regarding our revenue, um, as it relates to COVID-nineteen. We typically don't see revenue projections, they lag two to three months behind, uh, typically. And so, we'll be well within the new fiscal year before we truly know the impact of what COVID-nineteen has had. This isn't unique to Davie County, all counties are having this very, very same, uh, conversation right now. And we're no different in that, and so we've worked budgeted as conservatively as possible. Uh, we are hoping and praying that we'll receive, uh, state and federal stimulus to offset any losses. Once we know the amount of those losses, I will need to commend our department directors for, uh, taking good, uh, fiscal conservative measures in current year. Uh, but also as the new fiscal year begins, uh, and be approval with what we have, which we always do, so that's nothing new to us. Uh, but we will utilize those federal and state resources to the greatest extent we can, uh, given what we've incurred for this pandemic to mitigate those losses. As you know, we contribute, uh, an additional point zero two three cents, uh, per value to the fire rescue services. And then, uh, as I said, because of all those things, we were able, uh, to maintain the budget, uh, as it's presented today and balance it accordingly. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over, uh, to Ms. West to talk to you about, uh, the different funds and the breakouts. Uh, and, and you've seen some of these charts before, uh, but we will go through those, uh, as it relates to the public hearing. So, Ms. West?
Here's on, uh, slide number three, you can see the breakdown of seventy-eight, uh, point seven nine five million dollars that we currently vote in. And, uh, the general fund has votes of that six to sixteen dollars in the general fund, public utilities and the profits, about seven point seven million dollars. The going up plan is not being happening, there's another small bunch of those, and it's about seven eight point seven million dollars. So, on the next slide, you'll see the breakdown of, and the following slides are all from the general fund. So, the first slide is the general fund, ready, the general sixty-six million dollars, outlined with the seven percent, or it is the profit tax. So, sales tax for this upcoming fiscal year, estimating to be about five, assuming that more than revenues. As opposed to the, to the current, there's a sales tax of about thirteen percent. So, we can now reduce our projections quite a bit in the next six, seven, eight, or six months. We obviously have governmental, which are, uh, not just, uh, our towns. Revenue might get from the towns, but also the general and state government. But now, it's replicated in this budget, it's about seven point four two percent. And then you have almost none of the temperatures. So, on the next slide, you can see that we have, uh, these expenditures from the general fund running out by the federal. So, we have all the food areas, plus debt service, the coverage, the rent to show, it's several. You can see this compares the proposed budget to the original budget of the current fiscal year. And the changes, uh, include cost of living, the class of comp, uh, changes, personalities throughout the whole budget. Uh, there's some sales tax decrease, uh, for education, uh, food area. Right, capital project increases, the business operations, food area. And the difference in debt services is just basically how we structure our payments. With the provision of infrastructure, we'll have, uh, the power development, certain changes, as well as the kind of buildings that the city's handling. Just changes in the preparation of our structure, the purpose of it. And always, we always have the, the mandates of social services, the shared office, the, the safety office, the food area. As well as the model less than thirty, to the abilities that are popular to the people. So, the next slide shows, uh, total general fund expenditure across the area. You can see the safety and health community, uh, which includes all of public safety, as well as the health and social services portion of HHS. Are point two percent, or another, education is about to be two percent. Yeah, debt service in total is about, uh, thirteen percent. With that, the next slide, the next of the slides will show each focus area, what makes them a choice area. The personal, the education, the family, unforced, and the spouse, it's about, uh, five percent. It goes to, uh, others, all, uh, contributions, like a, a initial, uh, contribution, uh, protection. Next slide, it's the operations, uh, this includes our contribution to other, uh, capital movement on the page. Uh, type projects, uh, some with, uh, the contribution, the two, uh, are, uh, three percent. But this is off offer, contribution, you're going to be interested in some of the, uh, money. For the, the infrastructure, the, uh, fifty dollars, and all this, uh, first, uh, that, uh, all the people, all the people, uh, as well as, uh, taxes. And about registered fees, this is also where the, uh, building services, as well as the contribution of the, the, uh, uh. All the financial plates, this took, uh, every three D.O., uh, includes recreation parks, uh, lottery, water, essentially, senior services, veteran services. Emergency services, and, and armed rescue, we have sheriffs, and all the sheriff's departments, and the patrol police. The next plot chart shows the public utilities, they're including the, the road, the structure, the budget area. There's a budget set up on the sixth, uh, and, uh, you can see how it breaks down here, how the large portion is totally able to stand to the water treatment plant and have our operations, the installation. And these states, or counties, as well as the contributions to their, they have more projects. The next slide is just a snapshot of fiscal year twenty twenty-one's capital improvement plan. Uh, the items that you see here in red are, uh, some that we come up with, that we can play, that you really want, and what happens to the rules, all of ours, with everything, so we have that. Those red items, whereas it's red, the button is yellow, which would indicate, or white red, I think, is it? This slide fourteen, again, it's just the public utilities, once again, capital improvement plan, just, uh, just a snapshot of the next fiscal year, of those projects that we bring this year.
So, as we've discussed, uh, to remain competitive here in the county, we've included a cost of living adjustment, uh, for staff. We've absorbed retirement health premium increases for staff. Uh, we are implementing health risk assessments for covered staff and, uh, spouses, uh, to avoid hea- health insurance, uh, cost increases. The budget also reflects, uh, the unanticipated things that, as I mentioned earlier, we're, we're not sure about with the revenues. But what we did not want to do, uh, uh, was, uh, have a negative impact to our, uh, health premiums. So, uh, one of the things that I want to point out to you is, uh, this budget for full-time and regular part-time employees, uh, maintains their ability and eligibility to receive a two percent increase. Uh, how that's broken out will be, uh, one percent COLA that will occur, uh, sometime before, uh, January third, uh, on or before January third. And we'll talk about that, uh, in my closing thoughts here shortly, so I'll circle back, uh, around to that. For those employees who are not experiencing any performance issues or not serving in approbationary status. Employees who meet, uh, their performance goals on our, uh, countywide performance appraisal as it relates to our strategic plan, uh, can be eligible to receive up to an additional one percent salary merit increase on their anniversary date at the discretion of their department head. Uh, and then the county's gonna continue, as, as the board knows, uh, last year, we entered into a two-year, uh, market rate study cycle, uh, to bring our staff up to where they needed to be regarding, uh, salaries to be competitive. And, and this will continue for last year and final year of that process. And we'll build in a process going forward to be able to make those adjustments, uh, without having, uh, the impact that it's had in the past, uh, prolonging those. Uh, and as I mentioned, the retirement contribution rate, uh, for the county portion only, there's no increase in the employee portion there because the North Carolina local governmental employee retirement system regulations are something we have, we have to adhere to. In addition to that, um, I mentioned healthcare cost, uh, a minute ago. Uh, healthcare cost increases are being absorbed into the county, uh, budget, helping our, uh, staff, uh, avoid increases and spikes in those premiums. So, those remain unchanged for all of our employees. We've been able to do this since, uh, the fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, so this will be the sixth year with no health insurance, uh, increased premiums for staff. I think that's something that this board needs to be very proud of, uh, because few places, if any, is gonna be able to say that. In order to reduce, uh, those healthcare claims and keep our premium at the current level, we're gonna continue our health risk assessments, as I mentioned, uh, a minute ago. And then we're also gonna continue to invest in our employee wellness center, uh, and clinic that staff, uh, utilize, they can get their labs done there or primary care physician's office. Uh, we'll continue our wellness incentive for employees and spouses who, um, who complete their H.R.A. and maintain, uh, those ranges in consultation with their, uh, medical provider. And then we're also, uh, making sure that, as we move forward there, uh, trying to get all of our staff to complete an H.R.A. this year, uh, to avoid the, any penalties on their insurance premiums. This is how we, uh, we've been lucky and fortunate for six years straight, uh, but in order to stay there, we're gonna have to make sure, uh, that our H.R.A. indicators, uh, are met. So, with that, um, we'll transition now into, uh, our property, uh, tax rate. We shared our graph with you before, uh, it's on slide seventeen of the presentation, uh, and you'll be able to see that. Due to our history of level operational property tax, county is beginning to experience pressures that, you know, at some point, we'll have to address in the coming years. But apart from the increase that was incurred from voter referendums that have occurred, the new high school, as well as the new park, both of which were, as I said, were voted on by the citizens, the county, uh, Commissioners have not increased the property tax rate for operations, uh, since the oh-six, oh-seven fiscal year, uh, and that's been about fourteen years. So, uh, if we want to be able to maintain, um, our, our growth, uh, and balance that with, with our pressures, but also maximize our revenues, we're gonna have to make sure that we grow our housing, retail base and economic development opportunities so that we can proactively prepare for the future. I've already mentioned the uncertainty regarding our, uh, tax revenue and, uh, the sales and use tax revenue. And we'll know, uh, sometime between late summer, early fall, uh, likely the fall, uh, when, when those numbers come in. So, we'll have to be patient until then, and we are hesitantly optimistic. I think that's a, a key word there, that we are gonna receive those stimulus dollars that we mentioned to offset the losses, uh, but it is something that we're very much keeping, uh, an eye on. We've also talked to you about, uh, the fund balance and, and how to maintain, um, our, our LGC thresholds and our fiscal policies that Ms. West mentioned earlier. So, I'm gonna turn it back over to her to talk a little bit about the fund balance and the associated policies.
The fund balance, this brings, uh, here, Davie County, you know, we've got all, uh, our, our, which are our population, which, uh, five thousand to fifty thousand, uh, counties, but also all counties and states. You can see, the orange red line represents Davie County, set for fiscal year two thousand, like, uh, last year. The, uh, the bar edge, one degree, nine percent, our fund balance to, uh, the next budget. Out of the blue line cross represents twenty-five percent, which is our fiscal policies, so if we're below that, and what that means is, uh, land, what our, uh, if I, if I, uh, but, uh, it doesn't mean that the fund balance available actually went up in fiscal year two thousand. But it does, the expenditures, denominator of that range, increase also, it costs for that, that budget to be paid. And you can see there, the state, uh, line, you know, that's our all counties, and, and, uh, this, the green line is kind of visible a little bit, kind of remaining steady, as well as the population, like, you see the, the top line there, it's visible a bit and also remaining steady. So, these are important things to consider because they all just mean, I don't know, you know, compares, uh, to our past history, and they also compare us to our population. And generally speaking, for a fund balance, the smaller people that you are, it's, it's more important it is to have, you know, more of a, a balance ratio. So, if you compare us to our, our, you know, they might not have twenty-five percent. What that represents is just, uh, three months for operating this whole church, and, and, uh, that is.
Ms. West and, and Mr. Chairman, you may recall, uh, when Davin Corp came to speak to you about our fiscal policies that the board adopted, uh, a, a couple of things stand out there. One is, we're, we're really trying to follow, uh, some LGC guidance here because we kind of know what they look at. Uh, but two, as Commissioner Jones and Renninger, uh, are aware, and I'm sure that the rest of you too, because I think we've spoken about this, because of our economic development here, you know, comparing us to counties and population size sometimes seems like apples and oranges, uh, so, uh, but because LGC does look at the population groups, it is something that we need to be mindful of.
Like, it says, we're, you know, at the, of course, yeah, we're in that population, you know, it might make sense that we should be, like, billable, that our, the population, or, or your counties. So, on the next several slides, there, uh, is a summary of our fiscal policies, that we adopted these fiscal policies before we went to the bottom, our mental services, the bonds, we're asking. So, uh, the, uh, rating agencies, uh, really good, a lot of interest on, uh, fiscal policies. And, uh, we heard rated by Moody's, and some A to, we have rating of A plus, plus, and, of course, which is really, really good, for a county of our size. Uh, because we're really, really, the ones that are triple A, rated, our urban counties, the larger ones. So, uh, I'll summarize these, uh, the county one, these long-term, or other special rep, these, for, for funding special projects, not to continue the operations. And then also, uh, we want to maintain the target of available fund balance, because, which is, we hear, we lose twenty-five percent of the, of the church, we've talked about that many times. Uh, we also want to point out that since we are below twenty-five percent, we need to adopt a plan on how to, to store the available fund balance to above that threshold in the next regulation. Or also adopt a capital improvement plan, which we have, we have done, so already have the scheme. And then the next slide, we're gonna use a balance equation, and we use a major equation, uh, of debt financing, withdrawals, and capital reserves, you, uh, capital projects. We look at five long-term debt borrowings, or items that can be paid through current revenues or fund balance, unless justified. And then, the next few things are those ratios that we did often talk about, capital, uh, about that. So, minimal total payout ratio of all debt, we take it, and then the net debt service due schedule, which is a total of, uh, a church, a lot is a fifteen percent. And this is the one that's gonna have pressure on it, if you are, or, or, you see, you, you not in mind. And as we've talked about fiscal policy, or, you know, I know, which is, I've never, we've talked about, is it better to be in violation of your policy for a few years with a really good explanation, or change it? And it's like we've always had, is it's better to just be in violation of it for a couple of years, or have a good explanation, and rather than to change it? So, the last one on the slide is, you know, a five-year financial forecast. The next couple of slides are for utility full fiscal policies. We also, you know, we're interested in adopting similar fiscal policies for utility funds, uh, also for, uh, to show that, uh, it's good credit. So, we're gonna maintain a minimum debt service cover ratio of, 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 at times, a minimum dates actually in three hundred and sixty-five days. From lots of projection of revenues and expenditures, capital, assets, and also develop a five-year financial forecast for utility. And then, uh, we're gonna incorporate any rate increases as necessary, so we have, uh, capital, so the impairers outside of the sort of, that's, that periodically, you know, on the actuals. And, uh, with the rate law, uh, so we will limit, uh, increases to a maximum frequency, and they continue to keep that for us. On a top annual basis, the, uh, county, uh, during this, uh, and then we have, this, last year, adopted, uh, implemented a system, built that, these strategies, there are, uh, to, 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 to.
And before we go on to, uh, some additional noteworthy items, I just want to thank, thank this board. Uh, because of you, the county's maintained a bond rating of, uh, double A two by Moody's, uh, and a rating of double A plus by State and Coors. and a rating of double A plus by State and Coors. Those are excellent ratings for rural county, some of which only urban counties can rank higher because of their ability to grow a quicker tax base. But because of Moody's and S and P's rating, they did that because of our strong history of budget performance. I want to thank our finance and budget staff for that, all of our department directors for what they've done as well. But this board for conservative budget philosophies and the ability to balance any demands we have with available revenues, the fiscal policies that Ms. West has mentioned that all of you adopted have helped position us for those strong bond ratings. It shows that we're very competitive in the market and again, we have a great rating in Piedmont Triad region. So we want to thank the board for you adopting those policies and for your support of what we're trying to accomplish here. So with that, we're on the way to the end here, but I wanted to just point out some highlights that we've talked about before. So this budget includes our staffing levels as a relation to performance-based budgeting. It also revises the fee schedules that have been before you. One thing that we've talked about and this board approved was in twenty twenty-one, which can't occur until January, but in twenty twenty-one, you're rescinding the K nine privilege tax. And so citizens will experience that in this fiscal year. We maintained as required by the IRS, a mileage reimbursement rate per staff. As we've discussed with you before, all of our inter-locals, our towns are included. We're happy to have the partnerships we have with them. We'll be replacing, as we do every year, decommissioned vehicles that reach end of life, including the need to purchase ambulances. And then we also have, as Ms. West said earlier, our business recruitment strategies for economic development incentives as needed are in there. And then, as we've mentioned before, we have reached an agreement with the public service to allow one additional year of recycling services to continue for our citizens. And that gives us the time to partner with all three of our town partners. We'll be beginning meetings with the public services and our town partners here after the new fiscal year. Give us plenty of time to work on a sustainable recycling strategy for that. As you've heard before in the previous charts that you've seen, this continues our five focus areas as outlined in our strategic plan and performance-based budget. It continues our investments in infrastructure from technology to our capital improvement plan. And then also our facility space needs study through our building staging plan. In addition, we had a busy year this past year completing our comprehensive plan after we complete our joint utility joint meeting with the town of Moxville and decide how to proceed with that. Then Mr. Lambert and his team will begin working on a master utilities plan. All of those things will align with our strategic goals that all of you have set as part of this budgeting process this year to ensure alignment across the board. In addition, as you heard Ms. West say earlier, we're investing in education again through our inter-local agreement with Davie County Schools and our partnership with the College of Davidson in Davie Counties as we enhance those programming, the programming there as well. And really trying to align all the things happening in the world of economic development and young leaders and try to engage right people as part of all these strategies. And then we also are working through several of our programs to put new and exciting things out there. One is our convalescent care program that we started. We hope when we look back three years from now, we'll be very excited and happy about that. I know Public Health continues to partner with the federally qualified health center and some joint health initiatives, and that's exciting to see what happens a few years from now as well. And then we obviously have the new government center coming online, trying to also maintain our WABE transportation services. We are supporting the Moxville circular route to continue that. We know transportation is important for our residents right now. And then, as all of you know, maintaining our fire and rescue funding. There's no reduction in this budget for that. We'll continue to work with our chiefs. And as all of you know, we can't thank them enough for helping us finalize the fire contracts. We'll be working and are working on a joint software for all those departments and radios for out-of-county departments that did not receive those in the last round. And then in addition to that, we'll be developing a fire report for the board, looking at some different options occurring in other counties to give you, the board, plenty of time between now and this time next year when you're approving the budget again to make some decisions about sustainable fire funding and formulas for that services. And then we also can't forget our environmental partners, the cooperative extension, the forestry, soil and water folks and the watershed folks, helping us work with our farmers. That's a very important population here in rural Davie County. And then our senior and veteran services as well, working to enhance those programs. Even though those seniors that we've been working with are high-risk population, we very much miss them at the senior center. We hope to be able to safely figure out when it's the right time to bring them back. But you, the board, continue to invest in our seniors and also our veterans, and we thank you for that. We also have funding for arts and culture and tourism in here. And as we begin our new partnership with Fusion and Twin City Sports for the new field at the new park, that's exciting, and we'll be getting information out to our citizenry about the new park very soon. I know with this COVID nineteen epidemic we had, it put our grand opening back a bit. And it also is something that I know a lot of people want to see. And so we'll bring that to our citizens very soon. And as we continue to enhance the footprint for recreation and parks through open space and green space, looking at how we start connecting those spaces and parks as it relates to our outside agency funds for recreation centers and some other partnerships that we're involved with too, as we work with our Recreation and Parks Advisory Board and all their great work that they do to help support us. And I know that was a lot commissioners, I know we've talked to you about these things, but we want to be as open and transparent with our citizens as well, which is why we wanted to walk through those slides again. But just in closing, a few final points to think about here. So we know every year, anywhere, that needs always exceed our ability for revenue. But to combat this here, we've continued this performance-based budget philosophy, allowing historic and actual spending by prioritizing outcomes and using data to make good decisions. We know that as companies continue to invest in Davie County and want to move here, we know of citizens who may work at some of those places, may want to come here to live. But we know that people who were born and raised here in Davie County and continue to call this place home. We want to continue to think about all those populations, and we hope that the investments we make will result in positive outcomes for all of those. We hope that we'll be able to continue to grow jobs as we come out of this COVID nineteen epidemic and really stand out, we always have, as it relates to economic development, and we want to continue to do that. We know that we've had a strong go at economic development, a strong go at Davie County being an attractive place for people to come and live. But we know that with those things comes growth. And we have to be ready for those and the associated cost and proactively and strategically plan to get ahead of that to make sure we're financially sustainable in that regard. We know that with population growth, it brings increased service demands for the county. And that's something that we absolutely have to be thinking about as we plan for the future infrastructure needs of this county. You've heard many things today that as it relates to water and sewer that we've talked about. Help think about some of those items. In addition, we have to approach all these things very strategically. We've got to anticipate them. We have to develop long-range plans and all the alignment that I talked about a little while ago. All those things are things that are evolving that we're thinking about. We're very proud of what our staff has been able to accomplish. I can't thank you enough for your support, but also the staff for all they do for us each and every day to make our services what they need to be. We also continue to work with our federal, state, and local elected officials. I mentioned our town partners earlier. It takes all of us to make collective outcomes and share resources to best serve our citizens here in Davie County. We've talked about the investment, the capital improvements that Ms. West presented to you today. And we'll continue to look at those things. And as we move to the future, we want to make sure that we continue to follow our vision statement and affirming that we'll be a vibrant, prosperous, and dynamic county committed to building a sustainable future for generations to come while celebrating our rural heritage and enhancing our quality of life. Our mission statement notes our desire is to provide superior public service, offering all citizens the opportunity to improve that quality of life while enjoying the benefits of a safe, healthy, and vibrant county. And we're pleased to work with all of you and appreciate your support of us in this strategic plan that we have that you've been part of as we work diligently together to serve our staff, citizens, and our community. Our five focus areas that we talked about today, safe and healthy community, growth in infrastructure, business operations, quality of life in place, and education will guide this organization in making decisions and focus on our outcomes. Davie County's filled with wonderful people who volunteer daily to better this community. However, government, as all of us know, can't solve all of our issues. It takes everyone in conjunction with partnerships and our towns, our county staff, our private sector partners, nonprofit, faith-based partners, volunteers, and the list can go on and on to really serve our county. And I want to thank each of you for your input throughout this process, our department directors for their tireless effort to get us to this point, our finance and budget office for helping us compile all this, and each employee in Davie County who faithfully serves the citizens here each and every day. Can't thank them enough. And I hope and pray we collectively continue to move this county forward. Mr. Chairman, with that, I want to make a couple of closing adjustments and thoughts for the five commissioners to consider. Since the recommended budget was released, there's been discussion about two items. One is the proposed one percent COLA for staff and when to levy that increase. We have talked with several of you about what is the right point to do that? Is that a time between July one and January one of twenty twenty-one? So July one of twenty to January third of twenty twenty-one. Between those timeframes, we have said before to you on this call, we think we'll have revenue projections sometime in the fall. Again, typically they lag two to three months behind. So I know the board has continued to have conversations since the recommended budget about what is the right time to levy that additional COLA for staff. The second request that the board has talked about is as it relates to a loan that the Davie County Little League owes the county and the request to possibly defer that. Mr. Chairman, I will, I'll turn that back over to the board to deliberate on. No vote is needed today, but I do think you may want to talk about that. I know when we come back together on June twenty-fifth, as you heard Mr. Vogler say in the public hearing, and I'll close with this, the public hearing on the recommended budget is now open effective today. It'll be voted on at your next electronic meeting on June twenty-fifth at four o'clock. We have duly noted all those notices in two versions of the paper. It's on the building of the county administration building, and it's also been online and published on our website. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll turn it back over to you about those two items that would receive additional information for the board to discuss. And we'll be here should there be any questions. Commissioner, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Eller. I would just, on those last two points you brought up, I would just say on the COLA adjustment, when is the right time to implement that? For my vote, I certainly would say that I think we would all agree that our biggest asset in the county is our staff and our employees, our three hundred and fifty-two full-time and one hundred and ten part-time. But I think that the best course of action is to have a goal of implementing this before January first, but not committing to that. I would certainly like to see us do it no later than October first. And I think if we did it by October first, certainly by October first, we're going to know, have much more direction on how much of an impact this COVID situation has had on our revenue. And I think that would be certainly the more conservative play to wait and try to implement it October first versus now certainly, or that would certainly be better than waiting to January first. And the second thing on the Little League deferment, I had sent this kind of attention a week or so ago, and I think this is a very fair request from the Little League. The Little League does contribute greatly to our county, and they, due to COVID, have not been able to operate, and it's a very legitimate request. And I had sent the email earlier last week, or sometime last week, stating that we would just defer this for a year, simple interest, no prepayment, and that gives them all the flexibility that I think we can offer. So I'd ask everyone to reply to that, and I didn't hear anything on that. So I'm assuming that everyone was good with the email. Those are my two comments on those two points. But at this time, I'll turn it over to the board to discuss anything we've heard here today in anticipation of the vote on Thursday at four. So the floor is open.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to just tie me in and reiterate what you just said. I agree wholeheartedly the same, you know, our personnel and staff or what runs the county each and every day. And we certainly want to get them up to COLA as soon as possible. The, you know, conservative play here is to try to get that October, hopefully October one, when we do see these sales tax revenues come in that we are uncertain about. And I also wholeheartedly believe that we're going to give the Little League the time to get back on their feet from this pandemic, just like everybody else. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this, Richard, I would like to weigh in also that I think the Little League needs to be deferred for a year to allow them to, like James said, get back on their feet again. Also, I think that one of the most dangerous things that a county can do or any government or any business can do is spend money before you get it or before you even know you're going to have it. So I would like to postpone the COLA until we see the numbers that would be coming in in anticipation of what we will get. It would be a shame to give a COLA and then have to lay employees off, which we want to avoid at all costs if we can. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark. I want to thank the other commissioners for their willingness to let those hard-working folks down at Little League have a deferment on that loan. And I'm going to tell you, they're working hard, they're trying to get kids back out, outside playing ball and actually just being kids again. And so I really appreciate all of our work with them to try to work with them on this loan. And I, you know, originally we had talked about putting that COLA off until January. I think it's a very reasonable accommodation to make to look at at October in a concrete way, once we see, once we see the numbers. And I appreciate you moving back from January to October. And really, if there's something that breaks and we know, we know we can do it before that, then we do it before that. We meet once a month, so I think we're all open to that. And so we can, we can just look at that consistently as we go. And so appreciate you guys, and we appreciate our employees and all the folks that serve the citizens of this county every single day. And so hopefully we can get it done before October, but if not, hopefully we'll do it at that time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I concur with the Little League decision.
I concur with the Little League decision. I think that that's fine if we defer that until next year. Although if the pandemic continues, I don't know what they're going to do next year because at some point in time, we will have to hold them accountable for that. And concerned if I go in July because we need to take care of our people. But if we have to wait a little bit, then that's fine. But I really hope as quickly as possible, as Mark said, and let our employees know we appreciate the sacrifices that they make for all that they do, especially those who are on the ground and face-to-face with the citizens and doing the hard job.
Okay, any other comments about the budget presentation? Well, again, we will have a meeting Thursday at 4:00, same format, to take a vote, and we will deal with any public comments that come from the public hearing at that time. So we will look forward to the meeting at 4:00 to finish this up. At this time, we will go to new business. We have any new business that come before us this afternoon? Hearing none, we have any old business to deal with today? Again, hearing none, we will assume, I will assume there is none. Okay, next we move to the consent agenda, and remember, we do have the one item added at the end for Sergeant Geiger's service revolver and award there. So anybody have any questions or concerns about the consent agenda? Entertaining a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, I, and I would second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, or I'll call for the vote too, Mr. Bogler?
Mark Jones?
Yes.
Benita Fenny?
Yes.
Peter Renninger?
Yes.
James Blakely? James Blakely? Richard Poindexter, and we'll call James and see if he is still on or not.
Yes.
Chair, if you hold just a second, let's check on James.
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, James Blakely?
Okay, yes, yes.
That's all fine, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, appreciate everyone hanging in there. So at this time, I'll ask Mr. Eller to give the county manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief because I know I've spoken a lot with you today. And I can't thank you all again enough for your participation during the budget process. I've said to you all, and I'll say it again to everybody, and our staff included, this is one of the most interesting budget years we've ever had because of all the unknowns. And I appreciate your support through that. From our first meeting in January at the special call meeting, to all the updates we have monthly as we talk, and then the individual meetings we had on 5/21, and a follow-up meeting on 5/26, as I put the recommended budget out to you on 6/5. I mean, all those dates matter because it shows how engaged and involved you are. We appreciate your support there and all of our department directors as well. I mentioned the joint utility study with the town of Moxville. Again, as I said earlier, we will have a date that I'll be working with all of you on. We're hoping to do that on July 13th, and I think it's, we're trying to make sure that all the town commissioners can attend. That date is very iffy right now, but we will find a follow-up date to do that. I know that Hazel and Sawyer is ready to present, so is Mr. Lambert. But we are, we haven't scratched that date off the books yet. We're still trying to confirm at this point in time for that study. We continue to work with our partners at the schools and get information from the state about school reopening strategies. I think Mr. Wallace and his team are doing a great job, and we'll continue to send you that information as we know more about what the plan is for schools as we approach August. We're very, very excited about a conversation we're having with Yatt Hill right now. We've been engaged in a collaborative conversation to try to, what I'll call, close the gap as it relates to broadband availability to the home in Davie County. We know we've got about 25% of our residents that we would love to get from 75% to 100% and be one of those very few counties in the country that can say that they've done that. That would help us with economic development, it would help us with our school system, it would help us across the board. I know our technology team here will be very excited about that as well. So a lot of good conversations are taking place in our partners with economic development, and the schools are working with us on that, so more to come on that. But I wanted to thank Yatt Hill for what they've done to us, what they've done with us and for us, and hopefully will do to us as they increase the service going forward. So they've been great partners so far with us. And I just want to, again, thank this board for your support and for our staff. I know all of you tell our staff each and every time that we get together how important they are. There's some unsung heroes, some you never see, some you never hear of, that do their work very quietly behind the scenes to support our citizens in a way that sometimes isn't visible. And I just want to thank those staff members for their quiet contributions in a very humble way, and even those who are seen frequently for what they do. The past few months has not been easy, it's been very trying on all of us. But again, appreciate all of your support and the support of our team. We have a very strong team here in Davie County, and we want to maintain and keep that. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you and the board for hearing us out today during this budget presentation, and thank you for your support over the past few weeks in this uncharted territory. So again, I was going to be brief today, so I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Eller. Does anybody have any questions for John? Seeing none, we'll move to commissioner, or hearing none, we'll move to commissioners' comments. We'll start with Mr. Poindexter.
Just like I said, thank you to everybody for working together and helping through this COVID-19. Give the county employees a thumbs up for all that they do, the wonderful jobs that they do. I see the water department guys out in the ditch all the time somewhere, doing their job, and all the other employees in their ditches as well. Just like to say thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Penny?
I just want to echo what Richard said. We are very grateful for not only all of our county employees, but in all the municipalities and all of the people who have helped everything keep going through all of this. And we just can't forget about the people that are secluded and their mental health as they're closed up inside their houses, trying to avoid getting this COVID. Make sure you check on your neighbors, your elderly neighbors, make sure they're okay. Go to the grocery store for them. Want to say congratulations again to Elena, my friend and my hero. I just thank you so much for everything that you've done for Davie County and the children in this county. And congratulations to K9A, and I hope he has a very happy life with his family and civilian life now off the road of being a law enforcement K9. And we'll see everybody Thursday.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Just thanks to all the staff who helped put the budget together. Anyone who's listening, you know, we just, I just want to let our neighbors know we're praying for them. We're praying for each other together. I tell you, Davie County has done a great job of trying to keep some level of normalcy through the last, since March, when all this came about. And I'm just so proud to be a part of this community, so proud to be associated with the staff that we have and the citizens that we have, and our leadership team and this group of commissioners. So thank you so much. Hey, let's all keep our chins up, we're going to get through this. We'll be stronger than ever when we get through it, and things will be, things will be back to normal soon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Blakely?
Yes, I'd like to echo the same, Commissioner Jones. We've all been going through the roughest, one of the roughest times of our lives that anybody really can recollect in their lifetime. But, you know, I want to give a special thanks to John and the management team and the finance team for putting such hard work into this budget. The performance-based budgeting is paying off and showing its due. And I appreciate all the departments and all the directors and all they're doing for that. Like I said, we all want to get out of this thing and get back to normal life. Going to the beach, baseball, you know, traveling, getting to go to a restaurant, just relaxing. So, like I said, I pray with everyone, and we'll get back to it. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to say it's just been a very unusual time, and like to, everyone's making the best of it. And I think we're being creative and making the best of it. And that's especially true for the graduates of the high school here and also their early college. You know, graduating from high school is a watershed mark in most people's lives. And they were, I'm just happy we were able, they were able to come up with a way to celebrate that. And I would echo all the comments that were made here this evening by the fellow commissioners. And I just want to say how blessed we are to live in Davie County. And with that, we will look forward to speaking with you folks on Thursday at 4:00, if not before. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I'd like to motion to adjourn.
I second.
Okay. Mr. Bogler, do we need a vote on that?
You do, and Mr. Chair, at this time, as I make my final roll call, that will be the final roll call. Mark Jones?
Yes.
Benita Fenny?
Yes.
Peter Renninger?
Yes.
James Blakely?
Yes.
And Richard Poindexter?
Yes.
Thank you very much, we are adjourned. See you when, or talk to you Thursday. Thanks, guys.